Saint John Redevelopment Commission Regular Meeting for August 28, 2024. Do we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Beth?
Gerald Swetts.
Present.
Christian Jorgensen.
Present.
Mike Bovat.
Here.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Ann Oster.
Present.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Here.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Moving to item four, approval of minutes.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have approval of, we have a motion, we have a second for the approval of the July 7, 2024 meeting minutes.
July 24.
Right.
Just to be clear on the record.
Yes. Have a motion, have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving to item five, public hearings. A, Resolution 2024-08-28A, confirmatory resolution for Saint John, EDA 2, and...
So the proof of publications are all in order.
And any opening remarks here?
Yes, also, I'm sorry. This is just confirming the actions taken during the June 26, 2024 meeting. It's establishing the new allocation areas in EDA 2. And just to note that any bonds that are issued will be developer purchase bonds, paid solely from the increment generated from the project, and no risk of repayment from the town.
Thank you for that, Billy. Three on Resolution 2024-08-28A. Open the, we're going to open the public hearing for public comment. Any public comments at this time? Please come forward, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Ed Marson, 10704 Arbor Lane. Thank you very much, Redevelopment Commission, for allowing me to speak tonight. I just wanted to, Mr. Bovat or to Mr. Manassopoulos, just wanted to get to find, the EDA 2 area, which area is that? Is that the row homes that are on the northeast quadrant of 231 in Park Place?
So, the resident, the 231 residential TIF is the row homes that are on Park Place.
So that is ED 2?
Yes.
Okay. And what I wanted to find out, and thank you so much, sir, I wanted to know what the projected total, Town of Saint John and Hanover School Corporation real estate taxes that will be collected in the 20 years of this residential TIF, the total.
So I can get you those, those numbers add, but as far as what the school would be receiving without the TIF being in effect, or the EDA areas, there has been conversation and agreement with Hanover School to make sure that they receive their portion of the tax bill.
So that was my next question, I appreciate it, Bill. So at this time, the bonds that would be bought by the developer, is the split going to be 60%? This is an example, 60% to the developer and less than 40% to the Town of Saint John, and then a certain portion, I know that the school district has, has the, could get, receive up to 15%. Have those allocation numbers, those percentages been determined yet?
So after meeting with the financial advisors, Crown Point School System, Hanover School System, we came up with a number that would be between 7 and 10%.
Okay. And then the remaining amount would be then, of course, going to the town. Is the 60, is that 60% a true number for the developer?
So, I'm not sure where you got the 60%. As far as the 231 development, the townhomes will be 90% to the developer. The town will get 100% of the commercial.
I'm sorry, once again, the 90% for residential, that'll, that will be towards the developer?
Correct.
Okay. And then 100% to the commercial would go to the town?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marson. Any other public comments?
Kevin Toth, 9725 B West, 129 Place, Cedar Lake. I'm happy to hear to say that you had some discussions with the Hanover School Corporation, but I would also like to ask, you said that they're going to get 7 to 10% of the, of the allocation, or what amount?
So, I believe, you know, I, so I don't give you a wrong number. Andy? Do you have those numbers available?
And sir, what was your name again? I'm sorry.
Kevin Toth.
We don't have the best microphone.
Toth, T-O-T-H is my last name.
Kevin Toth.
So we're currently estimating that 10% to Hanover Schools would be worth about $51, $52,000 per year across the length of the TIF area. But again, that would be an annual.
Do you have any idea what that number would be if they got their normal tax collection and not the TIF amount? Because I kind of believe that the schools take about 50% of their, of the taxes normally, so.
So the...
Wouldn't that be quite a bit less than what they would be getting?
No, so the numbers that were, were figured were off of the presumed assessed value of those developments, and we want to make sure that they would not lose. In fact, the numbers that Andy stated, I believe, are a little bit higher than what they would have gotten.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Toth, thank you. Any other comments for public hearing here? Going once, going twice, going three times, public comment is now closed. And if I could, Mr. Svetnov, we just went through Resolution 2024, the public hearing, 08-28A. Billy commented to the proof of publication, do you care to comment on that, Joe?
I care to comment. All the proof of publications are in order at this time, under Indiana Statute, so we should, so we should have proceeded and we did proceed.
Thank you for that, Mr. Svetnov.
Excuse for, I'm, I apologize for finally...
Well, nobody can get around. In time, anywhere, so.
Road construction. With that being said, we have closed the public hearing. Five, we'd like to consider motion to approve Resolution 2024-08-28A.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-08-28A.
A second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Item B, Resolution 2024-08-28B, confirmatory resolution for Saint John, EDA 3. Mr. Svetnov, proof of publication?
Proof of publication, publications are in order at this time, Mr. President, we should, we should proceed.
Thank you for that. Opening remarks, Billy?
This also is, just confirming the actions taken on June 26, 2024. This is establishing the EDA 3. All tax increment generated will be captured by the town, and no bonds are contemplated at this time.
Thank you for that, gentlemen. Three, we are now opening for public comment. Any public comment on this resolution?
Ed Marson, 10704 Arbor Lane, Saint John. I have the same questions as far as the definition of EDA 3. Mr. Manassopoulos, would that be the 370 to 390 single-family homes that are east of Klein, south of 101st, or north of 231? I call those Gates East.
So, you are correct, that is the, the development we're talking about, and I'll jump to your next point, the town is taking 100% of that increment there.
So as far as the numbers, as far as the tax revenues for the Town of Saint John and Hanover School Corporation, you would be so kind to provide those to me later, is that correct?
Yes, but that would be the Crown Point School System there.
Understand, I'm sorry, my bad.
That's okay. So I will get you those numbers, and it's roughly about 100 and, 1.5 million a year that will, the town will collect.
And so out of the splits and so forth, once again, just to confirm, the actual, the developer, what would the developer get then for the split in that?
Nothing, that's the town, 100%.
100%?
Yes.
And the school, is there any determination at all, is the school getting...
Those, those numbers were also figured. We had a meeting with the CFO and the superintendent of the Crown Point School Systems. Offhand, I, I will tell you, it's roughly 51 or 52,000, don't, don't quote me on that, but again, we made sure that the, none of these school districts would lose any of the funding that it would have got.
So do you know what percentage that is of the...
I think it came out to about 8.2, somewhere around there, 8.2.
Would that be something you could confirm later on with me?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
All right, sir. Mr. Bovat, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Marson. Any other public comments for Resolution 2024-08-28B? Public comment going once, public comment going twice, public comment three times, public comment is closed. Consider motion to approve Resolution 2024-08-28B.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-08-28B.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Item six, consider Resolution 2024-08-28C, a resolution approving a form of economic development agreement with LBL Development LLC. Billy, any comments?
Yeah, this is the agreement between LBL and the town. It's primarily related to the project at 231 in Parrish, and at this time, I would ask for a motion to adopt this.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt?
Mr. President, motion.
Go ahead.
No, I'll second you.
All right, I'll make a motion to consider Resolution 2024-08-28C, resolution approving a form of economic development agreement with LBL Development LLC.
Support? I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Item seven, consider Resolution 2024-08-28D, a resolution pledging cer, certain tax increment finance revenues to economic development revenue bonds of the town. Billy?
So this pledges the tax increments generated from the projects to any of the developer purchase bonds that may be issued, and again, as before, this is with no risk of repayment to the town.
So they'll incur the full responsibility?
Sure, yes.
I have a Resolution 2024-08-28A. Do I have a motion to adopt? So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion by the Vice President, Jorgensen, I have a second by Wayne Pondinas, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Item eight, new business, Billy?
So, sorry, Mr. President, I have no new business other than the financial matters stated on the agenda.
Thank you for that. A, financial matters of the corporation, accounts payable voucher dated August 21, 2024, representing payment for payroll, supplies, services, and equipment rendered to the Town of Saint John, is a combined, combined total of $588,100. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ann Oster, a second from Christian Jorgensen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item nine, the resolution.
There are no other resolutions for, for this agenda.
Item 10, any old business. Item 11, reports and correspondences from anyone? Item 12, any public comment? Anybody care to say anything? Marson?
Ed Marson, 10704 Arbor Lane. Mr. Bovat, I just, and I don't want to put you into a corner, sir, but I do have a quick question.
Sure.
And that is, does the town at this time have an idea of how many residential TIF districts they're going to have?
So, are you speaking allocation areas or the actual EDAs?
I'm looking at the actual EDA areas, because I do know that there's, there was another, you know, development that was ult off on 101st by Park Place, that hasn't come to fruition, but the question was asked that that was going to be a possible residential TIF district, and I was just wondering if that's the end of it, or if there's going to be more than that? Three more, four more, 10 more? Just curious if there is a number at this time that the town, the board has given some kind of idea of what they'd like to do.
I know, like, for several months, Town Manager Billy, he's been, he's been working on looking at that, could you explain, Billy?
Yeah, so I, Ed, to answer your question, that is a case-by-case basis, depending on, on the developer, on what ideas they have, and what is needed by the town to make sure that the developments are, you know, adequate with water, anything else, roads. So again, it's a case-by-case basis.
But there isn't a total number yet that you've looked at? I mean, are you trying to look at a certain number as far as dollar number that you're trying to reach in order to do certain things within the community?
And, and again, yes and no. Obviously, we have a wish list of everything, as do the residents. So to, to put an actual number on it, we can't say, and we don't have those numbers. But again, it'll be a case-by-case basis on, on what the needs of the town is. We're not just letting, you know, the developer come in and put it up, we're making sure that we have everything that we need to, to service those areas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marson. Any other public comment?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Terry Nellman, current address of 9500 West 103rd Place, naturally, Saint John. Basically, I'm here to, I want to let you know that during the regular meeting, I want to hand out some documents to the whole council, the five members. I had handed out documents at the other redevelopment meeting on the 21st, and I would like these documents in your hands because they explain, they explain a lot of things. And it's regards to LBL, that's the main thing. Very, very dangerous to get together with, but we'll get into that at the next, the Town Council meeting. Again, I want to give all five of the members the documents, like I was entitled to do when Mr. Swetts was president. It's one thing to be able to look at things on a computer which might be lost or whatever, but it's a different thing to have documents in your hands. Documents in your hands mean, mean a lot more.
Absolutely.
Could you state your name and address again?
Sure. Terry Nellman, N-E-L-L-E.
Oh, you don't have to spell it.
M-A-N-N. The address of 9500 West 103rd Place, P-L-A-C-E, Saint John, and currently approximately a 25-year resident of Saint John.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Talk to you in a couple minutes.
Always welcome to hand them over to Jackie, and she'll definitely give them to us. Always.
I'd much rather put them in your hands, please. You got, I ask very, very nice, like, if I can put them in your hands like I did at the last meeting.
If, if that makes you feel more comfortable.
Very much, very much so, thank you. But thank you for the suggestion.
My name's, my name's Matt Ruhr, and I'm at 11069 Hickory Grove Road, and I'm the President of the Mill Creek Master HOA, and I want to just commend the Town Manager and the Hanover School District, and I have talked about this, that there's a lot of challenges here at work on the TIFs, and I want to commend everybody by working together proactively ahead of time to stay on this issue, because this is complicated, and where I've lived in the past, the school district was not involved in the conversations early enough. So I want you guys to continue doing that approach, and it speaks well for the town, and so, just want to keep encouraging that, and hopefully the school districts are joining in as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ruhr. Thank you. With no more public comment, then item 13, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Call to order for the Town of Saint John Town Council Meeting for August 28, 2024. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just a moment of silence, please. Item three, roll call, Beth?
Gerald Swetts.
Present.
Christian Jorgensen.
Here.
Bovat.
Here.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Ann Oster.
Present.
Bill Manassopoulos.
Here.
Joe Svetnov.
Here.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Thank you for that. At this time, we're going to have the Fire Department come up, and Mr. TJ Wilson, is that correct?
Yes.
And if you could just state your name again, I appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Sure. My name's TJ Wilson, I'm the Vice President of the Indiana Association of Firefighters, Local 5136. That's the union that represents the full-time professional firefighters of the Saint John Fire Department. First, I'd just like to thank the Town Council and Town Manager for allowing me to come and speak tonight, as well as allowing my brothers and sisters to attend as well. I just want to read a short statement that the Local 5136 wants to put out. Over the course of the past few months, the Saint John Fire Department and Local 5136 have been mentioned in several Facebook social media posts. We want to remind the public that when the Saint John Fire Department and Local 5136 have information to relay, it will be done through official channels. Anything else that you may see online from other sources is just gossip and unofficial business. If and when we have information for the public, we will release the information ourselves through official Facebook channels, through official channels such as the IAFF Local 5136 Facebook page. Furthermore, we want to let the public know that Chief Adams and the Saint John Fire Department Administration has been working in unison with Local 5136 to address department needs and move the department forward, and keep the citizens, the safety of our citizens at the forefront. Despite outside criticism, input, or interpretation, know that our members are dedicated to their mission and will continue to do the best they can with the resources that they are provided. Thank you, and stay safe, Saint John.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Item four, we have a proclamation today, and I'm going to read a proclamation. A proclamation acknowledging September as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month 2024. Whereas every year, thousands of women in the United States are diagnosed with ovarian cancer, like all cancers, ovarian cancer is brutal and cruel, inflicting pain and hardship for women and their families. Like so many families, we too know the pain of cancer all too well, and whereas during National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, we honor the courage of those affected by ovarian cancer, and renew our commitment to fighting this illness that takes the lives of far too many women, and whereas ovarian cancer ranks fifth in cancer deaths among women and causes more deaths than any other gynecological cancer. In 2024, it is estimated that 19,680 women will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer. Of those women diagnosed, an estimated 12,740 will lose their life to ovarian cancer this year. Sadly, the risk of a woman getting ovarian cancer is about 1 in 87 in her lifetime, and only 20% of all cases are found in stage one or two. If the cancer is caught in stage three or higher, the survival rate can be as low as 30%. And whereas, as we observe National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, we are united in our goal to improve the lives of all women carrying the burden of this disease, including the lives of their families and loved ones. We are also united in our support of the researchers, advocates, and healthcare professionals who are working tirelessly for new solutions to prevent, detect, and treat ovarian cancer, and to improve the overall health and well-being of all women. And now therefore, be it proclaimed by virtue of the authority vested in this public body of the laws of the State of Indiana, we do hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. We urge all residents to join in this special observance. And this is going to be in witness whereof, we have here on to set our hands this 28th day of August in the year of our Lord, 2024. Item five, approval of minutes for A, December 27.
Mr. President, are you going to, the presentation of the proclamation?
Is there affordable documents? I apologize?
So, we want to welcome you and, and commend you on, on your journey. That is a club that no one wants to be in. I can speak, obviously, being a survivor myself, that it's a, it's a long road sometimes, but the strength that you give other people that are going through it right now, and the cause that you're doing is just a wonderful thing.
And I want to thank you all again for accepting my request for this. As a eight-year stage III C survivor, it's clearly very near and dear to me, so, thank you.
If you could just state your name.
Teresa Stumpf, and 10351 Douglas Drive.
Okay. Thank you for this.
Thank you, Teresa.
And I do apologize again. Item five, approval of minutes, A, December 27, 2023, Town Council Minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second for the approval of the December 27, 2023 Town Council Minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. For July 24, 2024, Town Council Minutes, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. For the August 21, 2024, Town Council... For the August 21st, 2024 Town Council Study Session Minutes, do I have a motion?
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
I have to abstain. Wasn't there.
Pardon?
I wasn't there.
Okay. Motion carries five to zero. Item six, agenda items, the financial matters of the corporation. Request to purchase, there are a total of 15 requests to purchase in the combined total of $513,933.49 for approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Item two, accounts payable voucher dated August 21st, 2024, representing payment for payroll, supplies, services, and equipment rendered to the Town of St. John in the combined total of $3,024,794.75. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. B, on agenda items, ordinances, and resolutions. Consider Resolution 2024-08-28A, a resolution by the Town Council of the Town of St. John authorizing the investment of public funds pursuant to IC 5-13-9-5. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item two, consider Resolution 2024-08-28B, a resolution by the Town Council of the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, adopting the fiscal plan for LBL Development LLC, Lake Central School Corporation, and NIPSCO for the annexation of certain real property commonly known as 93rd Avenue, Crown Point, Indiana. And Billy, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, the fiscal plans have been reviewed by our financial advisor and everything is in order for a motion to adopt.
Mr. President, I move to adopt Resolution 2024-08-28B.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Number three, consider Resolution 2024-08-28C, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, approving a form of economic development agreement among the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, the St. John Redevelopment Commission, and LBL Development LLC. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to adopt Resolution 2024-08-28C.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Resolution carries four to one. Number four, consider ordinance 1837, an ordinance of the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, annexing adjacent and contiguous territory on second reading.
Mr. President, I happily move to adopt ordinance 1837.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance carries four to one. On second reading. Item five, consider ordinance 1839, an ordinance amending Town Ordinance Number 1483, being an ordinance replacing Town Ordinance Number 839 as amended, repealing all Town Code sections and ordinance or parts thereof in conflict therewith in all matters related heretofore on second reading.
Mr. President, happily move to adopt ordinance 1839.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Number six, consider ordinance 1840, an ordinance amending the St. John zoning ordinance and providing for a zoning change for the property development commonly known as Little Rascals in the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana on first reading. We did have a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission.
We did, Mr. President, and I move to adopt ordinance 1840 on first reading.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item seven, consider ordinance 18...
Oh, yeah. Sorry. I apologize, Mr. President.
What was that?
I was loudly asking a question to our town manager.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, we're good. Item seven, consider ordinance 1841, an ordinance amending Town Zoning Ordinance Number 1483 on first reading. And there was a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt ordinance 1841 on for first reading.
A second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
So, Mr. President.
Motion carries five zero.
Sorry.
Billy?
Seeing that it's only an amendment to the zoning ordinance, only one vote is, is needed on that.
Okay. It was unanimous also. Thank you for mentioning that. Seven, Town Council Action. Consider motion to approve Page Freezer as our social media archive provider in the amount of $3,120. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Number two, consider motion to approve mutual aid box alarm system agreement for the Fire Department.
Mr. President, so moved.
Do I have a second? I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Number three, consider motion to approve the purchase of a new ambulance by signing the commitment letter. Billy, did you want to comment on the ambulance?
Yeah. So the, the next item will be a sale of a 2009 ambulance. After speaking with the chief and staff, they'd like us to commit to purchasing an ambulance that'll be ready probably in about a year and a half to add to the fleet at a cost of $376,160.
So will the purchase of the old one then be applied? I mean, for the public?
Yeah, we can use the, the funds generated from there towards the new vehicle.
Can it be painted so that we can use it for a Bears game or something like that?
I think we might be able to work on that.
Okay.
Good luck. Do I have a motion to purchase of new ambulance by signing the commitment letter?
So moved, Mr. President.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item four, consider motion to approve the sale of the Fire Department vehicle, a 2009 Ford ambulance VIN number 1FDXE45P59DA93872. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
I was getting a condition on that, on selling it to me for $1. But you guys got way too ahead of me.
Yeah, we jumped the gun on you on that one. So.
As soon as you lose.
That's it.
This is humor, folks.
The motion carried five to zero. And no, he will not be getting it for a dollar. Item five, consider accepting a letter of credit in the amount of $6,654,298.75 for Astoria Subdivision.
Oh, so moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Item six, consider motion to approve the agreement with America and Bloom. And again, Billy, could you comment on?
Yes. So the Tree Board had a meeting and they would like to become part of America and Bloom. It's a great resource which, which allows us to have pretty much a arborist on call. The amounts would be a one-time $1,900 fee.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agreement with America and Bloom?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item seven, Shops on 96th Street settlement. Billy, could you speak to this?
Yes. So at last month's meeting, the Town Council asked Attorney Svetinoff to, to negotiate a settlement on this case and I'll turn it over to Joe.
And at this time, Mr. President, we have negotiated out a settlement. It's for the sum of approximately $60,000 worth of developer. This is in avoidance of angels litigation. It sounds, it's not in all claims, but for the developer agreements that are intact on that property right now, which Mr. Swetts was worried about. So we've addressed that. We've addressed all concerns. At this time, I heavily recommend that you go ahead and accept this settlement.
Okay. Thank you for that, Joe.
Joe, my understanding is that's generally speaking what it is that was owed, all things considered.
That was, that was negotiated upon a proper reconciliation agreement by the town and by the, by the developer. It was detailed. It was basically what had been included in the letter of recognition, plus any and all interest and fees that has occurred since. So it's a proper and fair settlement. I'm going to attempt to get the proper amount right now, which... Hold on one second, please.
So I'm seeing $60,926.74. If you could just read that into your motion.
Sure.
That is, it is a proper and necessary amount. But at this time, it's something that should be heavily considered by the county. Especially since any and all concerns have been settled with the properly, which had been concerning Councilor Swetts's money.
Okay. Let's have a motion to settle the agreement with the Shops on 96th in the amount of $60,926.74.
Mr. President, so moved, as settled by Attorney Svetinoff.
A second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Number eight, award Parks bid for Phase 3.
So the Park Board opened the bids last night for the, for the Gates Phase 3 lighting project. Two vendors submitted bids. The Park Board has sent over a favorable recommendation to award the lowest, most responsible bid to Midwestern Electric in the amount of $299,501.50.
All right.
So originally, the, the motion made by the Park Board was for $299,500. But that was a calculation error. So the correct amount is for $299,501.50.
And I have a copy of that. Thank you. Motion to award the Parks bid for Phase 3 in the amount of $299,501.50. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. President.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. And that, that's with the engineer saying in this statement that the engineer's estimate of $396,800, that we're saving money. So they're recommending that we award it tonight.
And that would be a contingency on the engineer?
No, they, they've looked at it already. And Dave, you have looked at it, right?
That is a letter over there.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that, Dave. So I have a motion. Wayne, you second?
I'll second. Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item eight, reports and correspondences from the Town Council. Any councilmen that would like to speak out?
Yeah, I'd like to speak on the, the water. As of today, our water operator, Bob Beloise, said that we are on top of things. Our water towers were full. And that's because the, each treatment plant, there's two. There's one in Monax up there in 41. There's one in the Gates. We changed out the media. With the change out of the media, we're able to produce more water now. And with what's going on with, with that, we can do that. We're going to have eight, nine are going to come on. So there's no shortage of water. We have a possible another well coming in off of 101st. So the town is doing well with water. Water pressure is good. So I know there's been comments about, you know, all the houses coming in. But we, we can produce the water and we have the, the right people working on it now. Took a long time in coming, but it's, it's here and you guys should not have to worry as residents.
Thank you for that, Wayne. It's good information.
Just a question, Wayne, do you have an update on when eight, nine are going to come online? Are we still a couple of years out?
No, I think hopefully spring of next year.
Okay.
Hopefully spring of next year.
Awesome. That's good news.
That'll be good. And that'll help it now with what we have now with the new media. We've done a lot, a lot of work in the last three, four years on the treatment plants.
Right. Anyone else have comments?
I just have a quick comment. I just want to remind all the residents too, if they can, please fill out the survey for the 40 acres that you could, you could view it on the St. John Clerk's Office Facebook page or it was in your water bill. But we really do want to get as much input as we can in regards to what the town would like to see on those 40 acres. We appreciate everybody completing it. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ann. And I think that's significant. I still, it's, it's pretty overwhelming that developer John Lawton donated 40 acres to the town. That is historic. That's never been done before. And that's going to be a great asset for this community. Anyone else? I would just like to comment that next month, this September, and we are going to remember ovarian cancer and that's a significant thing. And I really appreciate the lady that came in, was it Teresa? Appreciate her coming in and having the courage to share with us. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. That's tremendous. And also Labor Day, Labor Day is a tremendous day. I think everybody in here, you probably wouldn't be here, but you're working people. And Labor Day is a great day. Proud to be an American, that I can make a living, live in this country. I appreciate all the men and women, the police officers, the firefighters, Public Works, everyone that contributes to our society as a whole. And I, I love Labor Day. I guarantee I'm going to have a little probably cheeseburger and eat out. I mean, you got to enjoy it. It's, it's a great holiday. So don't forget that. Along with that, some young ladies came in. Along with that, some young ladies came in, a lady named Eliana, which is also my granddaughter's name, and a lady named Michelle, and they wanted us to emphasize, and maybe with the help of the clerk treasure, if you guys could like maybe comment and put it out here, we want to speak about Logan's Love, and they're going to have a golf outing at Wicker Park, and it's going to be September 28th. You can get all the information if anybody's interested. And this has specifically to do with autism. And Wayne, could you kind of comment? You have some insight on that, what they do with the blue bags?
They were here last year, and they had a group of people, had blue bags, and I think blue was a sign for autism. Somebody had, I put blue lights on my, at night, on my porch, and somebody thought I was supporting autism. I didn't know anything about it, but I was supporting the police and fire. So these ladies came, and they had the bags and stuff, but it's a worthwhile organization, and I think that people should try and support that. If you're a golfer, go out there and support them, and I think that'd be a great thing.
Thank you for that, Wayne. And that's all that I have. Anyone else? If not, town manager, Billy?
No other business, Mr. President.
Thank you, Billy. Our clerk treasure, Beth?
Billy had asked me to just prepare like a quick slide on Freedom Fest, so, which I did, because I think at the last council meeting, Jerry had asked kind of how the final numbers came in and how everything compared. So we did get all of our invoices, and everything is accounted for. So just some quick information. The previous town council set a budget of $60,000 for the event. We came in under budget by 14%, or we reduced the budget by $8,238. Our expenses were reduced by 10% from the previous year, or a total of $5,608. So for this event this year, we spent $51,762. Our revenue, it was increased by 45% from the previous year, or a total of $13,850. So we were able through sponsorships overall, and some vendor fees that we collected, to raise $44,850 to offset the expenses. So our loss this year, we still did show a loss, was $6,912, but that loss decreased by 74% from the previous year, or a total of $19,458. So I think all in all, it was a successful event. It was well attended. We didn't receive really any negative feedback. Everybody seemed to enjoy themselves. So with a lot of hard work from town staff, volunteers, and things of that nature, we were able to put on a pretty good show for under $7,000.
Wow.
At our real cost.
Yeah.
$51,000 total, but yeah.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
It's important to bring the community together and have these kinds of events, so everybody can come and see their neighbors and feel some pride in their community. And it's a pleasure to have these kinds of things. And for a nominal cost like that, it's a real benefit. It was well done. Well done and well managed.
Thanks.
I had the opportunity to attend, and my grandkids loved it. So kids love that stuff. It's tremendous. So thank you for that, Beth. Thank you for those numbers. I'm glad we were able to do it and do it well. And I appreciate everybody's efforts in that. Any other comments? All right, moving to item nine, public comment. Give me a second, I'm going to look for the sign-in sheet.
You know what, while he's grabbing the sign-in sheet, I do have for the council, if, Ann, if you'll pass it down, just all the expenses and revenue, a little more specific for your review.
Thank you.
You know, Beth, I didn't bring my reading glasses.
You need a magnifier.
Yeah. I mean, no, my readers can handle this one.
Hey, we originally had the comment for Logan's Love, which I was able to speak to that. Number two, Terry Nellman. Please come in, state your name and your address. Thank you.
Again, my name is Terry Nellman. Correct spelling is N-E-L-L-E-M-A-N-N. Current address of 9500 West 103rd Place, St. John. I'm going to hand these documents to the council now, and then I'll continue real quick.
Mr. Swet?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Thank you, sir.
I'm not going to go through all of this stuff, it's just... Could have dropped it off at my house, but thank you, Terry. Wayne, Mr. Ponderis. There's a little special one for you, it's just a little stamp maybe? And this is poster.
Thank you for...
Yes.
You dropped something.
Oh, thank you.
Basically, I'm here because of the LBL or LLB or BLL corporations with Mr. and Mrs.
Lawton, which is John Lawton, Deborah Lawton, and Michael Botos. Botos, B-O-T-T-O-S. The first page is that public service warning that was hanging in my garage. The town council did, no, excuse me, not the town council, but the building department and the commissioner did nothing at all about this public service warning. Lennar, next page is Lennar. Lennar sent out a cease and desist order against me in regards to the big problems with the Lennar Homes and the town building department's commissioner not worrying too much about it. Again, page three is the letter from the attorneys that represented the homeowners association, which is one of LBL, BLL, LLB corporations, which is by Lawton, Lawton, and Botos. Again, it's marked within the garage, inside your home, roof, walls, doors, windows. Went to court, that's the next page. That going to court was a little bit disruptive for the judge, Bruce Parent, didn't like what was going on.
Terry, that's three minutes. I give you another minute, go ahead.
No, it seems to be I might be boring you. I do my best to give you everything I can within that time period. So if I ran over, I just want you to look at one last document. I'm not, like I said, I wasn't going to go through everything. Thank you for the extra minute, and especially keeping very punctual time on me. The last page, planning commission of March 4th, 2020, in regards to LBL and all their petitions for going on in the town of St. John, and especially about the acquisition of the 40 acres that we discussed, you discussed a little bit earlier. It is amazing that Lawton wants to give the 40 acres to the town, which is great. That's a fantastic idea. But please remember history, the Trojan horse. What are you letting into this town and leaving in this town? Nothing against this council, nothing against attorney, clerk, or anybody, but the problem is, is with Lawton. I have the momentum and the will to keep coming back up here, and what he has done to the homeowners of St. John, the Lennar Homes, is deplorable.
Mr. Nellman, I have a question for you.
Thank you for the extra minute.
Mr. Nellman.
I have open all questions.
Yes.
I see the order entered on August 21st, 2019, in which you lost. And number five, the honorable Judge Parent said there was a more substantive order that complies with the annual law shortly. I see that you haven't included that. Have you received it?
Can you repeat that again? What page you on? What's the top heading?
Well, these aren't numbered.
Top heading?
It's the only order here. It's the order from the honorable Judge Parent.
Okay. I'm sorry I didn't number the pages, but go ahead.
It certainly says, number five, well, four granted the association's motion for preliminary injunction, so you lost.
Correct.
And number five says the court's going to enter a more substantive order. Where is that more substantive order?
As a matter of fact, that is a document that I received from the courts of Lake County in regards to coming back for a, I believe it would be a jury trial with the honorable Judge Melissa McDermott, which I did sit down with her in court with, me and my wife, with Benjamin Baloo, one of the three attorneys.
All I'm saying is, is this was five years ago, this order.
Correct.
In which you lost.
Correct.
Now, there has to have been proceedings that occurred subsequent to that, and I don't believe that you're giving the town council a full picture of what it is.
Could you speak up, move up?
Certainly.
Yeah, because it's speaker...
This order is from five years ago, sir.
Correct. Yes, sir.
There has to be subsequent orders and proceedings that happened. So what I'm saying is, you're not giving the town council a full picture of what's occurred up to date, because I know that there would be subsequent proceedings from 2019, and certainly the honorable Judge Parent wouldn't wait for five years to issue yet an additional order. So what are those additional orders and what it is that occurred?
May I?
In a nutshell.
May I?
In a sentence.
I just told you, the, we were in front of, I don't have the document in front of me. I'll be glad to find the document and present it to you at the next meeting.
What was your result?
What was my result? That from a $4,900 in fines and fees from the homeowners association led by Lawton, Lawton and Botos, they decided that out of the clear blue sky, all the funds that went to the three attorneys that were representing them...
Mr. Nellman.
$100. I paid $100.
Okay.
Fine.
Thank you.
And that's all court documents, yeah?
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
No problem. If you weren't that document from, I'll be glad to provide it.
No, no, no. Don't need to see it.
Thank you very much for the question. I enjoy that one. Is there any more questions from anybody?
We're good, thank you.
You sure? Okay, thank you. Thank you for the question, too.
Next, we have Teresa, Teresa, you spoke, do you care to say anything more?
No, just thank you again, and then we're going to be, you'll see around town, it'll be 96th Avenue, Astoria, 41, and 93rd. So thank you again.
You're very welcome. Matthew Rohr?
Once again, I'm Matt Rohr from 11069 Big Creek Grove Road in Cedar Lake in the Mill Creek subdivision. I wanted to make two quick points. One is, I wanted to thank the council, the town manager, and the planning and building staff for helping us as we worked through our discussions with LBL about the property that's at Parish and 231. We didn't get to an agreement exactly, mostly because the views of our group evolved over time, and we have a range of opinions. But I appreciate the collaborative approach that you guys helped cause to happen, and Bill and the staff were tremendously supportive of everybody involved in that effort. We've all got a vested interest in the success of that development, and we're their neighbors going forward, and it's in our best interest that turned out well, and we've committed to keep our conversations going over the time. But you guys helped make that happen, and we wanted to thank you for that. Second thing I wanted to do is, I wanted to thank President Bovat and Bill Manasopoulos for being in this room with Indot and the informational meeting, supporting the town on the biggest issue, which is the 231 and the traffic issues that were there. And Marson and I were both there, representing the Gates HOAs and Mill Creek HOAs. And I just wanted to thank you for doing what you're doing for the town, and that anything we can do to help you with the state, these kind of issues going forward, feel free to ask, and we'll be there. But the thanks for doing that. So that's it.
Thank you. You're welcome. Manasopoulos.
Manasopoulos, okay, you know.
Let's call him Billy Soup.
They say Billy Soup.
And...
Or at least in the restroom.
One other, Carmen Schaefer?
Thank you. My name is Carmen Schaefer, 9220 96th Place. Couple of things. While I was here, I received several messages from people in my neighborhood saying this is the second month in a row that this has not been livestreamed. Is there a reason for that?
So the IT department was already contacted, that's where I went when I stepped out, because I got the same text message. It is being recorded.
Okay.
With, again, obviously, it's no one's fault here, it's just an IT issue.
Okay.
With all the positive that went on, definitely, we'd like everyone to see it as it's going on.
Because, yeah, that's been a big issue with a lot of people in my neighborhood contacting me, saying it's a problem, second month in a row, because they can't always come to these meetings, and they want to be seeing what's going on, hearing what's going on because of their own commitments and whatnot.
Of course. And we're all aware of it, and we've been aware of it, we're trying to work on it.
Yep. Okay. Fair enough.
It's on, it is showing that it's on. I mean, we even took a picture of it.
Okay.
We have no idea why it's not.
Okay, so I can let them know it'll be posted at some point this evening then?
It's being recorded, right?
It's being recorded.
It's being recorded. It's just, the light is on, so...
Okay, perfect. I will let them know. The other thing, I'm not as well-versed in all these resolutions and whatnot, and, you know, going through and listening to you guys approve and whatnot, I think it'd be really helpful to, I'm guessing, a lot of the people here, and then the people listening, to have a little bit more information. It's helpful when Billy elaborates on some of these things, but you guys don't always elaborate on a lot of this stuff. So to understand what's happening in our town, it'd be really helpful to have more information about what each of these resolutions are, so we actually know what you're approving. You know, I know that, you know, you've got these purchase requests, and I see that they're all laid out here, but you've got $513,000 and change. Well, what's it for? You've got 15 requests. What are they for? And then you've got accounts payable, I get that, and I'm assuming that's all here in this document, but what's it for?
And that information is all available and to the public. You know, we try to post as soon as we can. The agendas change as things pop up, so that changes a little bit, and I don't want me to, you know, overset my purview, Mr. President. So that changes a little bit, but it's all public record, and you can certainly find out. The clerk's office is more than accommodating, and so is Mr. Manasopoulos with regard to supplying information and copies of the resolutions we signed. Again, it is all public record, and everyone is entitled to it.
Okay, well, sometimes it's not knowing where to get this information, so to have a little bit more information about what these are could be very helpful, especially to people who don't... and I see that they're all laid out here, but you've got $513,000 and change. Well, what's it for? You've got 15 requests. What are they for? And then you've got accounts payable. I get that. And I'm assuming that's all here in this document, but what's it for?
And that information is all available and to the public. You know, we try to post as soon as we can. The agendas change as things pop up. So that changes a little bit. And I don't mean to, you know, overset my purview, Mr. President. So that changes a little bit, but it's all public record, and you can certainly find out. The clerk's office is more than accommodating, and so is Mr. Montesopoulos with regard to supplying information and copies of the resolutions we sign. Again, it is all public record, and everyone is entitled to it.
Okay, well, sometimes it's not knowing where to get this information. So to have a little bit more information about what these are could be very helpful, especially to people who don't always know what they are. I mean, I go to some of these meetings when I can, when I don't have conflicts. So I know some of these resolutions, as far as the plan commission and what's being built, but I don't always know what these ordinances are and what they line up to. Like, you know, when you were, when someone asked about, is this, you know, 231 and, you know, this road? Okay, that made sense. But if I don't know which ordinance and what this is lining up to with a particular location, that's a little confusing for a lot of people as far as where's this location. So it'd be helpful to have a little bit more information other than just that ordinance or this resolution, just to have that information for the regular Joe who's attending these meetings, just to have some point of reference of what that is.
Well, if we explained, if we explained that all, I don't mean to cut you off, I apologize, ma'am. I mean, if we explained all of it during the meeting, we'd be here for five hours. And, which is the reason why it's all public record.
I understand.
And again...
And I'm not asking necessarily for it to be explained during the meeting.
Ah, okay.
Like I said, just a little information here on the document. That's all I'm asking for. Just, you know, about maybe where the location is, or that could be very helpful.
We could probably...
I mean, Billy, he definitely explained about some of them, but it's not always explained. So I appreciated the few things, and I made some notes, because some of my residents are gonna wanna know a little bit about what's going on, and I try and keep them informed.
Absolutely.
But a lot of these things, I'm like, I'm not really sure. So I'll have to look these things up, and I don't even know where the first place is to look these.
Well, you can just look right here. So if you have anything, you give me a call. Or send me an email on anything that you don't understand there.
Okay.
Because it is a little bit confusing, it is long, it's, some resolutions are fifty pages.
Exactly. And I'm not, I'm not a legalese kind of person where I know a lot of this information.
Yeah, feel free. And then I think all of our, everything that's paid out, and I'll kick it over to Beth.
No, that's fine. So like you had mentioned on your agenda, stapled to the back, you should have 20 pages of all of our payment claims. And it'll tell you, right, and this is also on our website, and it's also on social media prior to the meetings. So anybody is able to review every single claim that's being approved. You'll see the name of the claimant, you'll see what office it's from, you'll see the amount of payment being made. And in the right-hand column, you'll see a brief description like topsoil, sod restoration, Klein Avenue extension. So it's pretty descriptive.
Yeah.
But if there's any additional questions that are on here, I'm sure, you know, we would be happy to answer that.
For the most part, I was able to make pretty much good sense of the information here. It's just, yeah, I mean, when most of you guys are approving it, and then there's, you know, Jerry might not approve of this, I wanna know why.
Well, you could always stick around and ask Jerry.
I will definitely be talking to Jerry.
Please do.
And I'm, well...
I believe that's three minutes. I think we've...
Yeah.
So...
No, we kind of engaged you here. Typically, it's three minutes.
I understand.
And typically, we don't do that.
And I just wanna say for the record, so I understand what you're saying. But the week prior, like last week, we do a study session, which is recorded and could be viewed, where we go over each one of these ordinances, and we say, it's explained to us what they are. Just saying, so, but you could always ask for them, but we...
Yeah, that's it.
Alright, thank you so much.
I wish to adjourn.
Item 10, adjournment. We have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry five zero. We're adjourned.